All right. As we return to the regular meeting, I want to remind everyone that pursuant to Kansas opening statutes, no binding action was taken by the City Council while on executive session. I would entertain a motion.
And Mayor, I move to terminate the employment of the Finance and HR Director effective immediately.
I have a second.
A second motion?
I have a motion by Todd, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
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 Ares five oh. We will move on to the next item, approving the Consent Agenda. Council, any questions on the Consent Agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Second?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ares five oh. We will move on to the Communication Section. Kichai Civic Groups or Committees? Do we have any Civic Groups or Committees? Seeing none, I will make a comment about the fair. I want to thank everybody who was a sponsor, or a donor, or somebody who came out and had fun. We gave out over a hundred pumpkins to families who bought our buttons and came and supported us. The band was amazing, and we really appreciate your participation. And then Kendra and I also attended the Kichai Arts Council Barnet quilt painting, and that was a really fun event, and had a lot of fun with our community. All right, move on to Kichai Good News. Council, any Kichai Good News? You know, I always have some. I want to say that I put out the next Mayor for a Day. We did extend it a little bit to include all ages from five, age five to eighteen. So anybody who wants their young adult to be able to become Mayor for a day, that runs from September twenty-seventh to November eleventh. If you want to send an email to me, or bring in that letter to the city, we would be glad to have it, and we'll vote and announce that at the council meeting in November. All right. Any other Kichai residents? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the Public Comments Section. I want to remind everyone, the public wishing to address the council are asked to sign a public form request, form the OBB, listing your topic along with your name, address, and phone number for the record. You are asked to limit your presentation to five minutes. Your comments or requests may be addressed at a future meeting. And I will have the timer on my phone, so hopefully we all can hear it. Debbie?
Madam Mayor, do you have one that was given to me, I'd like to read?
Yes, go ahead.
It stated October the seventh, twenty twenty-four. Dear City Council of Kichai, as a Kichai resident since June of twenty twenty-one, I want to voice my concern for the approval of a proposed liquor store for our city. My husband and I live here from Bel Air because of Kichai's countrylike atmosphere, safety, tranquility, and to be closer to our church. We both treasure Kichai and love living here as many do. Allowing a liquor store in town will attract those who drink hard liquor to frequent our roads in Kichai. Some of these customers will drive to our smaller town to buy their liquor, even if they have been drinking earlier in the day. Those that drink hard liquor are usually bigger consumers of alcohol, and this will have an effect on our city residents. My concern is for the road safety for all Kichai residents, and those who drive to our town for business and church. Our church has a hundred and seventy-five attendees on Sunday mornings, and a hundred and twenty-five young people plus staff coming on Sunday evenings to Awana. Having a liquor store in Kichai will result in increased road safety and increased accidents for residents and those driving to and from our town. Is the risk of increased accidents worth a liquor store coming to Kichai? Can our city consider attracting other businesses with a lower road safety risk to all? Thank you for hearing my concerns for our city. Claudia Johnson.
First one for speaking, and first one?
The next one is Dennis Polley, Austin.
Like to come up in the audio and state your name and address, please.
I live at three forty-seven Anderson, and I have a concern about the traffic on Anderson. People have moved the barricades on Loft Street, and we have had kids about get hit by people speeding down through there. And my concern is, on the public hearing that we had, or public informancy, that street is supposed to be blocked off and closed. That's what it says on the official map. I know we can't have police officers sitting down there and enforce that, but can't we get some concrete barricades, like the lady that has a storage unit put in hers, to keep them going in her driveway, and then around the barricades? You know, someone's gonna get hurt. And that's just my concern.
Thank you very much.
Angela Watson?
Angela.
About my hat, does this have a fracture?
Yes.
I'm at four twelve East Shining Court.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Angela Watson. I have been a resident of Kichai for the past four years. I want to say that I wanted to come talk to you guys last month, but I've been really afraid to. I'm coming as a private citizen, but my daughter is a police officer here, and I'm very concerned about retaliation. So again, I'm a private citizen, not a parent right now. One of the first things we noticed when we moved to this town is how friendly and hopeful the city staff all were, and how happy we seem to be here in Kichai. In the past six months, I have continued to watch the atmosphere decline. I don't usually involve myself in city politics, but here I am. I have watched the city council meetings for the past several months, and I have been struck by the complete lack of involvement the city council and mayor have with citizens that come up to speak. It is not just your job to listen. It is your job to respond to their questions and comments, acknowledging your voices. The citizens are your bosses. While your job, you are the boss of the city staff and the police department. There is absolutely no ownership of your roles on this council, or ownership to the citizens of Kichai. If this was at your employment, you would not stand idly by, or at least I hope you wouldn't. You would go to your supervisor, your HR department, or your finance department to get answers. You are not doing any of this. You appear to be taking the city administrator's word versus digging into the information provided to you. Is the information correct? Is it legal? Is it abiding by city, county, state, and federal laws? Is it honest? Is there anything that is not being provided to you? I have seen very, very few questions asked of departments regarding their requests for more money, more assets. It is more, more, and more, and the city council and mayor do nothing but say yes. There appears to be no civic and financial responsibility being taken by this council and mayor. You have a responsibility by accepting these positions to ensure fiscal, legal, and ethical responsibility of course, David. I have personally witnessed unprofessional behavior by officers in this city. And if you want to know more, I am more than willing to give it to you. My eldest daughter has offered, and not one of you even acknowledged it. Not one of you. Again, the council ignores ongoing concerns regarding our police department and decisions being made. Officers have left the department for other cities, and I don't believe that they have left for more pay. I believe there is a crisis of leadership and a toxic work environment that is not being addressed. Let's talk about crisis of leadership. Again, the council and mayor staff are to be leaders. Was it a good fiscal decision to give a raise to our city administrator, who's been here only six months, and this is his first time being the city administrator? Has the city councilor or mayor taken any time to talk to our city staff and police officers about their jobs? Who is doing a check-in with them to see how they are feeling, how they feel their bosses are doing, or their leadership is doing? Is there any follow-up with staff after they leave Kichai, by any person sitting here tonight? Do any of you do follow-up? Do you even know what the policies and procedures are for every department here? Do you even know if they're being followed? Do you know what they are? Do you ask questions about policies and procedures? I think there's a belief by everyone on this council that there are only a handful of people in Kichai that are not happy with how things are going. I am seeing the comments, I am seeing more people here. It is not just a handful. This is a whole city that is very concerned about where we are going. I am begging you to do something, and do your job before the city has a financial crisis or risks a lawsuit. Thank you.
May the Lord help you. To the council, and to all the dignitaries in the room, and to the city of Kichai residents, so glad you're here. Can we talk? Well, let's talk about the fact of what this resident just spoke about. I have come to city meetings many years. I've been here thirty-eight years, who's been here with me? I'm not just representing any particular area. I'm representing me as a resident of this city. And I'm excited to know that I am, and promoted Kichai when they called it everything but Kichai. Ketchup, Keetip, anything but Kichai. And I corrected them, so I'm very proud of my city. Want to make sure that we get some things done. I like the water tower, think the water tower is pretty. Will it help me if Wichita decides we not giving you any more water except with a high rate? I don't think so. What our resident just spoke about was exactly what I wrote on this paper. That we've given all of our opinions. I heard residents say, we're on fixed income, decisions are being made, and then they went and sat down, and yes, 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 and yes. On all of those different council meetings, council decisions. I want to know when do I get a chance? Not to just give you how I feel, but I want to know when can I give you a thought that will have a decision-making change? Not just that we get up here and tell you how we feel, and then go home and lay down, and another decision is made, in executive decisions, in a city council meeting, at the time that you got a full house? I have never seen that. I am with an organization that has over three hundred thousand women since nineteen thirteen. I am a first vice president. I've been the corresponding secretary, the recording secretary, the financial secretary. And we don't do things on the fly of the moment. We make sure that our community, our chapter hears what's going on. And we are ruled by our international CEO, Elsie Cook Holmes. I know her name, but some of you, I do not. And if I saw you in a grocery market, would I know you? Or do you even know me? So I'm saying to you, let's not just come together and sit and wave our hands and make decisions. Let's really be a community. I don't have a McDonald's here. I don't have a Sonic. I can't buy ice cream cone. I can't do anything except buy gas. I want to see a difference in Kichai, but the only way we gonna do it is work together. And we got to make sure that we believe in our city. I believe in it, do you?
Debbie Mark, five thirty-one, Mary Creek Drive.
Debbie Mark, five thirty-one, Mary Creek Drive. And the two previous speakers, there's nothing, I'm going to just speak what they've said, because I think that's all heartfelt, and I think most of the residents here feel the same way. I am opposed to the liquor store in the area of the old boardwalk. This definitely does not fit in with our business community. Mr. Ramos keeps saying that it's for his father and for his father's retirement, and I'm sorry, the city of Kichai in the citizens is not a retirement plan that involves a liquor store. There is a liquor store less than two miles away from here, and people, if they need their liquor, they can drive two miles to get it, and not disturb the boardwalk area, as it was previously called. The last thing we need is a bunch of signs out on the road advertising liquor, and one of those wavy guys, you know, to attract business. No, thank you. I would like for the council to vote no on the liquor store. I think it is time that you guys really listen to the residents of Kichai. We really feel like we did. Blank stares, and no involvement, no response. You guys like, just sit up there and go, and then you do what you want anyway. I'm not saying you guys probably disagree with me on that, but I'm just telling you, we as residents, this is how we're feeling. And it's just all on deaf ears. And then I would also, I know it's not Mr. Jansby's fault that he got a twenty percent increase in rate, or twenty percent increase in his rates, but that's ridiculous. Who gets a twenty percent increase after six months on the job? That is ridiculous. I haven't had a raise at my job for over three years, and you're handing out money like it's monopoly money. It's not monopoly money. It is our money. It's our money. And we're tired of you guys throwing money around and like, we're gonna build a sidewalk that goes to nowhere. We're gonna do this project. It's got to stop. It is time for us to tighten our belts and do the bare minimum, because people are suffering with their income. Though you've seen the price of groceries? It's not getting any better. But yet, people are striving to hold their budgets in line, but I don't feel like the city council is doing that. You know, just like the flock system, that was not a necessity, that's a luxury. There is no reason for us to be paying for that. It is time to tighten the belt and do the bare minimum, and let people get back on their feet before you guys just start doling out money. I do have something positive, and another thing is like, I would like to know who voted in favor of this raise, was it unanimous? I think we need to know who's responsible for this, and that should be open. I just feel like you guys don't want things to get out. You try to keep things hush, hush. And that is not healthy for us, because then we're wondering what else you're hiding. To end on a positive note, I don't know who cut the tree north of Jump Start, that right there at the exit where people X come out, but thank you, because now I don't have to peer around it, knowing when you did it, if I'm gonna get ran over by a car. So whoever is responsible for that, thank you.
I knew you'd ask, but we do have to forum hopping and talking during, when people are speaking. It's not okay, so if we could stop, thanks. Next one.
Doug?
Doug Redan, three nine two, East Shining Court, here in Kichai. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it. As I said in the planning commission, I'm kind of new to these meetings. I pastor in Valley Center, and sometimes I go and pray over the city council, but I've never really spoken to you. And so I promise I won't treat you like my congregation, okay? I won't take an offering. During the planning commission, one of the, I forget who it was on the commission that said, we don't, we won't turn down a request, because it's just ten or twelve people who said no. But then they turned around and approved a request to go to you with zero people voting for it on the two planning commissions. Nobody there was for it, they were all against it. The planning commission chairman, after they voted, he didn't have to vote, they passed it, but after they voted, he had a comment, and he said this. Yes, we need more business, but we will not get a grocery store, because there's one just down the street. And so I went up to him, I said, Chairman, you're right. So why do we need a liquor store when there's two just down the street? And they voted for it, and when they did vote for it, the gentleman, I do not know him, when they passed it, he walked out, and he turned, not to those who were for it, because nobody was for it that was here, he turned to those who were against it, and he said this. Better luck next time, and just walked out in a very arrogant way. He presented his plan, he said, there'll be a lot of money spent, a lot of rocks around there, maybe even some water, it's gonna look really nice. And then he encouraged everybody to go to Wichita and see his basically same business that he wants to put in here. And I said to myself, self, I don't have to go to Wichita. I can go to Valley Floral and look at his business. Is that the kind of rock he's gonna put up that's crumbling? I've been in this area twenty-one years, fifteen in Park City, and six and a half here in Kichai. And ever since I've been here, the Valley Floral, I'll make it as nice as I can, is very unattractive, there's no curb appeal. And so I don't need to know what he's doing in Wichita. I don't care what he does in Wichita, what is he doing here? If he's not taking care of that business and making it look nice, how will he take care of this new one? Maybe he's, maybe he's, there's doing some work, maybe they're doing work on it, maybe he's cleaning up, and that's good. If that's the case, ask yourself why? Why is he cleaning up now? Why didn't he do it years ago? He wants to make an impression that everything is all right. Let's see. And so those two things, the way he has made his business, and you know, not taking care of his business, and the way he treated us who didn't like that, that, I question his character. He wants to build a liquor store in an arts and walking environment. And I wrote that down that night, art and walking and liquor store. How come I never put that together? That just, that goes really good, doesn't it? It just doesn't. And so I would question his character. Be careful who you do business with. I know we need business, I know we need the tax revenue with all the spending that's going on, we need something that's going on, but sometimes the business will take away more than it puts in. Again, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Can you be my mother? We, me and my husband and my two boys are at one thirty-seven East Kichai, so directly across where they're wanting to put the liquor store. So for obvious reasons, we are opposed to it. We sold our last house a couple of years ago, and it's been a horrible process trying to get our current house up. It's made us question, should we even be where we are? And then they tell us that they want to put a liquor store across the street. Literally anything, I would go and support any business, a restaurant, a liver and onions, I would go twice a week if you would just not put a liquor store across the street. We actually had one in walking distance of our last house, which is a reason why we moved. We had some unruly neighbors who walked in, throw a fireball, ladies, we called her. She would just drink her liquor and throw her trash in the street. And it wasn't the environment that we wanted for our boys. We didn't like them playing out in the yard, it didn't feel safe. We really wanted to be in a place that felt safe. Also, we don't even have our porch yet on our new house, and I was so excited to sit on our front porch, and just, that's not gonna be the best view for something like coffee is a liquor store. So yeah, that's all I got, should have prepared something, maybe taken a city's class and was clapping. I don't know if it's proper around here, but we don't own a liquor store. So before I have to beg? Thank you.
We will close public comment, and move on to Old Business. Item A, NRP discussion.
Mayor and council, on the next two items, the NRP and the Heartboard Discussion, I don't have a lot of new information in light of the agenda this evening. We could go pretty late. I, it would be my recommendation that the council table these discussions in the interest of Congress.
We need a motion, and if we would adjust it?
Yeah, you should, you should do a motion for it, until the table till the next meeting.
Okay. Council, do you have interest in this?
I would entertain a motion to table the NRP.
If we move tables, move item A, Old Business, eight A, NRP Discussion?
Wait a second. Second? I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye. Ares five oh. I would entertain a motion for item B.
Move the table, Old Business, item eight B, Heartboard Discussion?
Wait a second. I have a motion by Todd, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye. Ares five oh. Move on to New Business, Conditional Use. Let me get my paper to read my fore. I call agenda item nine A, a consideration of case number CU dash two zero two four dash zero two. I request to allow accessory dwelling in the R1 single-family residential district. Before we proceed, would any member of city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Seeing no, but the records show that there is no extensions, and that a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of twenty percent or more of the properties being rezoned, or twenty percent or more of the properties within the official notification area, as the city clerk determined a valid protest for this case. Seeing no, the planning commission held the public hearing for this case on nine-ten, twenty twenty-four, as the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes. I will now call on Zoning Administrator Dustin Elton to present the case report, background information, and the planning commission's recommendation.
All right. CU twenty twenty-four dash zero two, David Messmore of Strategic Construction Services. The applicant is requesting a conditional use to turn his pool house into an accessory apartment. The conditional use, excuse me, the car pool house is part of an oversized storage shed or structure, a garage. The property is generally located south of Kichai Road on the west side of Matson Avenue, or four fifteen South Matson, in a zoned R1 single-family residential district. The property is platted as Lot One, Block A, that trades on Matson Avenue Edition, developed with a single-family residence and detached oversized garage slash pool house. The accessory apartment is defined in the Kichai zoning regulations as an accessory residential unit that is constructed within or attached to the primary structure on a parcel or another accessory structure such as a garage. Five point four of the zoning regulations states accessory apartment or dwelling, a residential unit that is accessory to the single-family residential primary use on the same lot. An accessory apartment is constructed inside or attached to the primary structure or a secondary structure. An accessory dwelling exists independently and is detached from all other structures. The applicant wants to change the pool house into an accessory apartment to allow for a kitchen. The applicant is also planning on having parents live in the accessory apartment. Specific use standards for the Kichai zoning regulations, section ten point three seven, state accessory apartment or dwelling, guest home, or pool house shall be limited to one such structure per lot and allowed only in conjunction with detached single-family residential primary structures. B shall be compatible with the immediate neighborhood and constructed with the same or equal siding materials as the primary structure. C shall be limited in size to fifty percent of the principal structure's gross floor area. D shall be subject to applicable lot coverage setback and off-street parking requirements. E, accessory apartments or dwellings may be rented as an independent residential unit and may be served by an independent utility connection subject to the applicable City of Kichai building codes. Two, shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with Seju County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of certificate of like. Guest homes and pool houses shall not be utilized on a permanent basis as sleeping or living quarters. When the applicant first applied to have the pool house as part of the oversized storage shed or garage, excuse me, storage shed or structure, he said he had no plans to have a kitchen or allow anyone to live in the building permanently. The primary structure has a total of two thousand two hundred forty square feet, and the pool house slash accessory apartment has a, has six hundred forty-eight square feet, which is only twenty-eight point nine two percent of the primary residence. which is only twenty eight point nine two percent of the primary residence. Approval of this request would allow the applicant to add a kitchen oven to the pool house, making it an accessory apartment for family. Case history, the property was platted as lot one, block A, the trees on Matson Avenue addition in May of twenty twenty. The property has had two previous cases. CU twenty two, s- excuse me, CU twenty twenty two oh three, allow a pool house as part of his storage shed or structure garage. CU twenty twenty two dash zero four, allow storage shed or structure garage over seven hundred twenty square feet. Both cases were heard by the planning commission on October eighth, twenty twenty two and voted to recommend approval with a vote of three zero. City council heard both cases on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty two and voted approval of ordinance eighteen zero three dash twenty two for both cases. Adjacent zoning and land use, north, south and east are zoned and developed as R one single family residences. To the west is A one agricultural, agricultural. South Matson Avenue is a paved local road with open ditches. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. The future development plan map from the plan depicts the subject property as appropriate for housing. The proposed accessory apartment structure will be a secondary use to the residence. A goal of the plan is to provide quality and context sensitive aesthetics in development and redevelopment. Proposed design will be, uh, required by the specific use standards to have exterior siding of a color and visual appearance similar to the principal structure. This will help to ensure that the accessory apartment has context sensitive aesthetics. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved with following conditions. One, the accessory apartment or storage shed or structured garage shall be maintained under the same ownership as the principal structure and shall not be subdivided as an individual lot or condominium unit. A deed restriction stating such shall be filed with the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Two, the accessory apartment must comply with specific use standards of section ten point three seven of the City of Kichai zoning regulations. Three, only one family may live in the accessory apartment at a time. Four, if the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based upon the following findings. One, properties to the north, south and east of the subject property are zoned as R one single family residential and developed with R one single family homes. Property to the west is zoned A one agricultural and developed agricultural. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed, uh, garage or accessory apartment. The subject site is currently zoned R one, single family residential, which permits an accessory apartment by conditional use. Five, the property is not vacant. It was developed with a single family residence in twenty twenty two. Six, staff does not see an issue with R one single family residential district with an accessory apartment being attached or part of the current oversized storage shed or garage being adjacent to other R one single family residential district properties or A one. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. The conditions of approval should minimize any potential detrimental impacts. Eight, approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts with public health, safety or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no po- no input positive or negative has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we have an aerial map showing the property. Zoning map, R one, surrounded by R one with this green over here being A one or agricultural. Uh, future development plan map of the twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty forty comprehensive plan showing that it is good for housing. This was, uh, site plan of when the house was built along with the, uh, garage. Residence, concrete driveway, this here is all concrete here and the garage back here. Site photos, property, south and north.
Uh, see, I let you do it this time.
I, I just let you go.
Does it, counsel, have any questions? I actually have a question. What is our definition of only one family may live there? Is there blood relatives to them? Is it a separate family? Like, what does that entail?
The intent is to have either his parents or in-laws live in the accessory apartment. I, my definition would be just one family. No, no, two in-laws or any, not two in-laws, but both parents, both sides of that family staying in there at the same time. If that makes sense. Her parents or his parents.
Okay, so, I guess, how many occupants? Because if, I mean, definition wise, I mean, a family could be defined in many different ways. So that's why I'm, I guess, I'm trying to figure all in my mind what that means.
From my understandings with David, it's just, it's gonna be one or two people at a time.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? That was my one question. Okay. Um, applicant response, don't see him.
He is out of town with his son.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to pre- wish to present any new information to the council? He's very, he's, no, he's not here. Does the council have any questions for the applicant, even though he's not here? Seeing no. Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing no. Assuming all, oh, now we're gonna go through, um, each of those zoning conditions. Item one, zoning use in character of the neighborhood. Do you agree with the finding?
I agree.
Uh, consistent, consistency with the comprehension, uh, plan, vision and character of the City of Kichai.
I agree.
Accuracy of public utilities, roadways and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
Agreed.
The suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted.
Agreed.
Length of time property has remained vacant as shown.
Agreed.
Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties.
Agreed.
Extent to which removal of restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties.
Agreed.
Proportionality of loss slash impact to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain of the community at large.
Agreed.
Public input. Cause there was no public input.
Okay, agreed.
Alright, now we move on. Alright, assuming all necessary information has been received, counsel has three options. Adopt the planning commission's recommendation of approval. Override the planning commission's recommendation, recommendation of approval with a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the planning commission for future consideration along with statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does counsel have any further questions or discussion? Seeing no, none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve CU dash two zero two four dash zero two.
Alright, I have a motion.
One second.
A motion to approve the, the planning commission's recommendation has been made, uh, by council member Brewer and signed in by council member, member Hedstrom. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed? Carrie's five oh. Case number CU dash two zero two four dash zero two is approved. The approval will become effective on the date ordinance number one eight three seven dash two four is published in the Ark Valley News. Next, large chat.
Do we need to approve the ordinance?
You need us to approve the ordinance?
Yeah, if you include it in the motion, if that's, that would be better for the record.
So, um, I would entertain a motion for the ordinance.
I move we approve ordinance eighteen thirty seven dash twenty four.
Wait a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Todd, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh.
I call agenda item nine B, a consideration of case number CU dash two zero two four dash zero. A request to allow a beer, wine and liquor store on property in C one arts and business district, zone, zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest bias or any other reason?
No. Let the records show that there are no tenants in the form of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of twenty percent or more of the property being rezoned or twenty percent or more of the property within the official notification area as the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case. The planning commission held the public hearing for this case on eight thirteen twenty four as the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved minutes.
And I'll just correct your record to be back.
Sorry. Okay, May fourteenth, sorry. Thank you for that. I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Felton to present the case report, background information and the planning commission's recommendation. Dustin.
Alright, CU twenty twenty four dash zero three, Carlos Ramos and Louis Ramos. Conditional use as an exception to allow a beer, wine or liquor store for properties zoned as the C one arts and business district. The applicants are requesting a conditional use to allow a beer, a beer, wine or liquor store for properties zoned as the C one arts and business district. The property is generally located two hundred twenty feet east of Oliver on Kichai Road or two hundred east Kichai Road. The applicants have plans to have a liquor slash flower shop with the possibility of a coffee slash ice cream shop. The building's plan would be seventy five by hundred feet or seven thousand five hundred square feet. The property is thirty six thousand nine hundred twenty eight square feet. The building will take up approximately twenty percent of the total space. In the C one arts and business district, the maximum permitted square footage is one hundred percent minus applicable yard and off-street parking requirements. The property is platted as lot one, block one of the boardwalk addition and is currently undeveloped. Beer, wine or liquor store is defined in the zoning regulations as establishments that provide retail sales of packaged alcoholic beverages. A beer, wine or liquor store is only allowed on properties in the C one arts and business district with conditional use approval. The applicant has provided a site plan showing a general layout of the building and site. However, a final site plan shall be submitted to planning staff, staff prior to final approval. Case history, in twenty fifteen, the subject site was planted as lot one, block one of the boardwalk addition. There were three zoning cases heard for this property in twenty fifteen. BZACU twenty fifteen dash zero two, conditional use request for principal building exceeding the gross maximum size. BZAV twenty fifteen dash zero two, bearings request for a reduction in total parking spaces. SD twenty fifteen dash zero two, subdivision case for the replating of three properties into one lot. Section fourteen point six C of the Kichai zoning regulations states, conditional use approved in accordance with these regulations shall run with land upon approval. They shall remain in effect without regard to ownership so long as the use remains on the subject, subject property without being significantly altered or destroyed. Section fifteen point six point B, B three of the Kichai zoning regulations states that variances granted by the board shall be valid for a period not to exceed one hundred and eighty days from the hearing date. Case BZACU twenty fifteen dash zero two and BZAV twenty fifteen dash zero two were heard and approved on June fifteenth, twenty fifteen. However, because no action occurred to construct, occurred to construct the proposed use and structure on the property, the previous approvals are null and void. These previous cases will not impact the current applicant's, um, or plans. Adjacent zoning and land use, north, C one and R one arts and business district and single family residential. South, east and west are all C one and developed with arts and business district. Public services, Kichai Road or sixty first street north is a paved local road and all public services are available and provided to the property. Conformance to plans and policies. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan. Page seventeen of the comprehensive plan states, build a strong and diverse local economy. Page eighteen states, a key objective for growing Kichai's economy is to promote the development of the arts and business district as the local hub of commercial and economic activity. Page twenty five states, Kichai should provide ample gathering spaces, especially within the arts and business district. The future development plan map depicts the subject property as an appropriate, as appropriate for arts and business district, which permits a beer, wine or liquor store by conditional use and a flower shop by right. Recommendation, based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved subject to the following conditions. One, the beer, wine or liquor store must comply with the table of required off-street parking by land use of section seven point forty. Two, the applicant shall provide a revised site plan including building dimensions, setbacks, easements and an appropriate drainage plan relative to the project and structure before any building permit is submitted. Three, development and maintenance of the site shall be in conformance with the approved site plan. Four, if the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the ZA, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. These next three were, um, added by planning commission. Five, beer, wine and liquor store shall not exceed two thousand five hundred square feet. Six, screen is required between other commercial and residential lots. Seven, the applicants shall conform to section eight of the zoning regulations sign regulations. This recommendation is based on the following findings. Properties to the south, east and west are zoned and developed as C one arts and business district. Properties to the north are zoned and developed as R one single family, uh, residential district and C one arts and business district. Two, the request of a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's twenty forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not see an increase in public utilities or services. Four, the subject site is currently zoned C one arts and business district, which permits beer, wine or liquor store by conditional use approval. Five, the property has been undeveloped around and since the time of plating in twenty fifteen. Six, staff does not see an issue with C one arts and business district being adjacent to other C one arts and business district and R one single family residential district. Property owners to the north have submitted a zoning permit along their south side of the property, thus creating a screen between the two properties. That fence is currently up. Seven, staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Eight, approval of this request represents a gain to the public in that it contributes to support economic opportunities in the area. Approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in, Denial of this application could represent a loss in, in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. Nine, no input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Aerial map showing the subject property here at two hundred east Kichai Road. Zoning map, we have R one to the north, C one surrounding it to the east, south, and west. Future development plan map from the twenty forty comprehensive plan showing the subject site about right here as good for Arts and Business District. This is the site plan that was submitted at the time, to the north is on your left. This is showing the liquor store, possible ice cream shop, ice cream, um, ice cream or coffee shop over here on the east side. Site photos, north of the subject property, east, south, and west.
Missing a house. Sorry.
I mean, it's there, but it's not.
That is the end of my report.
I'm trying to find her again. Um, I do, I know some people look a little confused, but when Dustin said there was no public input, again, his staff report was before the public hearing, so that's why there is no input.
I, I want to reiterate that, that, that public input was not received towards me.
Correct.
Okay.
That is.
I did not receive it. If it was, it would be down here at the end and more than happy to read any of it that was sent to me.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any specific questions for Dustin? All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
The, the house, we saw the foundation, I know the picture was taken early.
Yes.
Is that, is that the R one property?
The R one is going to be up here on the north. It is back here, um, I can.
So the residence is on C one?
There is a residence in the C one area and there's one to the north. Zoom in here. This is the subject property right here. This right here is all owned by the same, uh, person and it is zoned as R one. This property, this guy right here is, uh, C one as well and it has a single-family residential house on it.
Karen, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I have a couple, I have a question about regarding the first meeting in which Mr. Ramos presented his plan. I believe several residents were in attendance. Can you, would you like to describe, um, the sentiment of the folks that actually spoke at that time? If possible. I don't know if that's a appropriate question or not, but.
For, for may fourteenth on the first one?
Dustin, there's a, there's a copy of the minutes, have they provided, provided the copy of the minutes from?
I think she wanted it summarized for the.
Yeah, could we summarize the minutes from, from that meeting?
I believe.
The public comment.
The majority of the people that spoke during, um, both meetings on may fourteenth and August thirteenth.
Yes.
Uh, had, were opposed to the beer, wine, or liquor store.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Um, were those, the folks that spoke, um, were they within the area of notification?
I'll be honest with you, I am not a hundred percent sure. I know one of them that is here tonight is.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? I have one on how, how, um, can you talk about screening? How are we defining screening? Cause I know that has come up before. Just a fence.
I, yes, fence.
Okay, so on all of the screening that we're talking about, it was a fence.
It's already built.
There's a fence. We'll, uh, come back here to the map here. There is a fence that goes, I want to say right about here. I believe, that's approximately, so it does cover the single-family residential property to the north and it is owned by those, uh, by that family.
Is there any other screening requirements other than that particular section that need to be completed for the conditional use?
My, I would, I would suggest fence going along east and west of the property.
Is that what was, what we're talking about, I guess, is our?
Yes, as part of the conditions of the.
Yeah, the screening is required between other commercial and residential.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they will have to put a fence, they will be required to put a fence up there.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's up to, it could go either way about this property here since this here is Valley Floral itself and it would be owned by the same person.
I guess this may be an answering question. Is the definition of screening, is that covered?
I haven't, I haven't looked it up in a little while, but I think screening, uh, there's some discretion for the zoning administrator to determine what is adequate screening in this kind of circumstance, but the definition does allow for something less than a, than a solid fence in circumstances if you leave it appropriate, like, you know, tall, thick foliage or something, landscaping can qualify as screening if it's determined appropriate.
So if we say we leave it and we don't talk about it, we send it back to the planning commission?
It'll be an open question for the zoning administrator to determine what's, what's adequate.
Just wanted to clarify. All right. Any other question? Go ahead.
I have a question. On the recommendations where it says number seven, the applicant shall conform to section eight of the zoning regulations, can you, um, or is that in here somewhere?
That is the, for the sign regulations. Section eight.
Do you have, do you have that?
I can pull it up. It's the biggest section in the regulations. It's, it's big.
Do you have a summary?
Do I?
Do you have a summary?
No, there's, there's no way for me to summarize it because there's so many sign possibilities and. So the intent and purpose for is, uh, these sign regulations to define the allowable uses of signs within zoning jurisdiction and to regulate the time, place, and manner of signs without regulating speech or content. During one of the meetings, um, a citizen brought forward the request or a request saying that they don't want to see the waving inflatable armed people out there waving around. They want, they've seen other businesses that are not following sign regulations to a T and once this really enforced for that business, shouldn't go in.
It's more of a reiteration, I mean, this condition were not, they would still be obligated to comply with all the sign regulations.
Right.
Any other questions?
Okay, can we take, can we recess for five minutes? Is that even the one in the middle? Can we, can I ask for a recess and recess for five minutes during the middle?
Not in the middle of the item.
Okay.
Well, I'm telling you right now.
Oh, okay, okay. For, for that purpose, sure.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to recess for five minutes.
Okay.
And that would be, uh, eight forty-four.
I'll go ahead.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I don't even need.
Do you have a second?
Only me, nobody wants to clean this up, no.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Uh, a motion by Paul, second by, I think it's Todd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carrie Spivey will be back at four, uh, or eight fifty-four.
We will return now to the meetings. Any further questions for Dustin?
All right. Thank you, Dustin.
Council members should report the general nature of any verbal or written expertise communication received prior to this meeting. However, it is not necessary to disclose the names of the parties. Does any council member wish to report expertise communication? I know it says council members, but I'll report that I have had expertise communication. We can just start it out one side. Paul?
No.
Karen?
No.
Todd?
No.
Kendra?
Yes. Any communication about this, correct?
Any communication outside of, of a meeting with anyone about this case? As a, as a citizen or the applicant or anyone spoken to outside of this meeting about this?
Expertise kind of is a confusing.
So what anybody?
Oh, have residents been?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so yes, yes. Yes.
And is there anything about the nature of those or any information in those communications that you would want to share with the rest of the council?
No, just expressing their opinion on.
Okay.
Uh, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
All right. Now let me find expertise. Thank you. Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? Okay. And you can state your name.
Hello, my name is Trem Galveen. I'm the Galveen Law Firm. I'm the attorney for Valley Floral and Carlos Ramos. And thank you, council, for having us here and giving us this opportunity to talk to you. I do want to just present because there's issues concerning the property and the owners and just going to make consensus that some of the residents have made under opening comments. The property is owned by Valley Floral. The, the conditions and things that are being raised, that are being raised are by Carlos Ramos, who is the owner of Valley Floral. So and the people connected that are looking at this store are all related to Valley Floral. But Valley Floral, just to give an idea for the council and the community, has been in business for eighty-three years. And in Valley Floral, Carlos Ramos has owned the property, has owned Valley Floral for twenty, of the last twenty years. As far as the nursery that's been here in town that people have raised, it's been there for several decades. And from my understanding, the company has been a very, has contributed as a corporate citizen to the economy and the opportunities at Key Chai. Such as I, my understanding, there's an event coming this weekend where they bring in like a thousand vendors and things that are looking at floral. So they've been very cautious in the growth and what ways, what residents could. The company itself believes in the city and they're growing in the city. And, and during the time that they've been here, they've been in existence, they haven't had any legal issues. They haven't had any legal problems. They pay their taxes. They've been good corporate citizens of Key Chai. So the liquor store here is, which is, would be called Booze and Blooms, does sell liquor. But it sells flowers as well. In order for any type of business of this nature to, to succeed or to continue, just being a liquor store or something doesn't work. You have to have something else. Valley Floral sells flower, but they also have the refrigeration. And that's why here, when you saw the plans, there is the plan for an ice cream shop and coffee. Because while there's, they have the refrigeration perfect for that. Okay? The store is not going to be bigger than twenty-five square feet. As far as the liquor business, the liquor business and liquor industry, especially in Kansas, is a very highly regulated industry. And so they are, they, because of what they, they come from, from Valley Floral, these individuals, they pay attention to the regulations, they're going to abide by the regulations. Okay? And so they have that history of doing that. The company has secured the approval of the Key Chai development process and gone through and tried to accommodate everything, listened to the community. And even would be a good neighbor had some of these residents come up to them and say, hey, would you not put a waving, you know, banner up? Which I imagine if you've gone and looked at their other, their other locations, they wouldn't do that anywhere. But also they're very respectful, just like here, the nursery, of, they're not going to do anything out of the ordinary, anything big like that. Now, they do agree with the conditions that have been put on by the city and the city statute. If we look back at what the city has done in the past and we look at what we call comparables. What is comparable, other situations that have been comparable to this? Well, just down the street, there's a bar that serves alcohol and that has been approved. Prior, my understanding, prior to this, there was another liquor store that, in the area that had been approved. I even drove down to your convenience store here and they sell liquor, right next to a park where kids would be playing. A liquor store there. But here, this is the ideal business or owners who have contributed to the community that want to continue to contribute to the community. Okay? They're involved with the community. They're a reputable floral company. They're reputable business owners. They have a, they have a history of having clean and being in, a, a clean, community-involved stores. Even in their flower stores that they've had over the last, you know, eight decades. The owners plan to continue to grow and complement their business, just like they're going to get, planning to go in having an ice cream store or an ice cream parlor, a coffee store, and what hasn't been communicated here, having a grocery store. More of a, a specialized grocery store similar to Trader Joe's. But that's the plan of the owners because they believe in the community and they believe in the city of Key Chai. They meet, they meet all the requirements of the twenty-four comprehensive plan. And if there is any questions, I do have pictures. If you did not have a chance to go and see their facilities of other stores to show how clean and how they set up this and it's not out to, like the advertising or anything like that. Then I would offer these to the council if they, you want to see pictures of, of a similar store of what they have, just so you have an idea. Yeah, approaching for all these?
Thank you. Well, these passing results, counsel, do you have questions? I know I have one, but I'll wait and see if anybody else has a question first. My question is hours of operation. I just want to make it clear with those.
The hours, yeah, I guess then that might be more for something specific like that from Mr. Ramos. As far as the, the hours that you, the store would operate?
Thank you, counsel, for seeing us today. We would follow the same regulations that the state of Kansas has, which, you know, Monday through Saturday, we are legally able to open from nine AM to eleven PM. Our stores at Booze and Blooms, the picture you've seen there, we close thirty minutes earlier just to start, we could, because we cannot sell legally alcohol past eleven. So we close three minutes in, we start shutting things, start cleaning the things up, close the store down. So nine, eleven, and on Sundays, the law says we can only be open from noon to eight PM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We may call you back in a while, so I'm sorry. Counsel, any questions? Maybe not. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Okay, never mind. Okay, go ahead. That, that was the applicant. Yeah.
Can you expand on the, I guess, the timeline? So you want to start with the liquor store and then you're saying that there's a potential for the ice cream shop and coffee shop?
Uh, no, ma'am. This would be slightly too soon. We're going to go ahead and put like, I think on the plan shows about a ten thousand square, uh, building. Looking at things that complement flowers and, you know, like trade I said, you know, we specialize in refrigeration for the last fifty years. We've invested millions of dollars in refrigeration. Some of the pictures you see here is actually full unit coolers. And we really envisioning a very kind of romantic kind of look, you know, flowers, liquor, chocolates, cars. You know, for some of the members that were able to tour facilities, you guys see traditional flower shops and we have bears, we have chocolates. I mean, again, liquor is just a very small part of what we bring, bring on. It is part of it, but it's not our main line of business and just like what we did with Booze and Blooms, we treat it very respectfully way. And we're just wanting to, you know, we want families, communities that have something nice, you know, and keep building on it. Thank you. And as, you know, as a business person, I, I know I hear a lot of the comprehensive plans and I'm, I'm, I, I just want to be part. I want to be part of it. I would continue to be like Valley Pass for like several decades, be part of this community. And we believe in Key Chai and the, you know, the council's rules. We're continuing to invest in Key Chai and hopefully, you know, get more residents here and more tax- per hour. That was a long answer to your, very short question.
I have a question now.
Go ahead.
So Carlos, you just stated that liquor store cannot support itself independently on its own without these other amenities. Do you have any data to support that or any research to do that?
Uh, yes, because.
Independent standalone liquor store.
Oh, you know, inter- about a twelve P and S, thank you. Public office statements, balance sheets, capital statements, thank you. So when you look at a liquor store business, thank you, it runs a gross margin of about a twenty-five percent. So, you know, gross margin of twenty-five percent, basically, it's, with that is what you pay the rest of the middle part of your income segment. So with that, you have to pay labor, with that you have to pay rent, you have to pay all these different things. And liquor creating a very small gross margin due to the fact that it's very hard to differentiate liquor. Because a bottle of Jack Daniels or a, you know, Bud Light here is the same as a Bud Light down the street, kind of. So what you do is you bring different things on to differentiate the experience that a customer might have. Thank you. So, uh, well, they, to make it happen where somebody can kind of take on and be just a straight-up liquor store and survive on it, you would have to have a massive amount of inventory, like Total Wine. And then what happens, you're so, you're, you're so cash dependent on that inventory now. So you, all you said, so it's really hard to kind of go forward. So what liquor stores have found is that you start seeing things like chips. You start seeing things like beef jerky. You start seeing all kinds of different items inside your liquor store to offset that gross margin. In our case, ours is going to be chocolates, bears, flowers, cars, just romantic. Thanks, ma'am.
Any other question? Or the option?
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to that applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? I saw Joni stand first and then we'll go to you, sir. And we'll have five minutes, so let me pull out my phone, sorry.
Okay. You're good. Ready? Yes. Joni Harris, one oh nine West Tico West Street. Having attended every planning commission meeting, I have followed KCU dash two zero two four dash zeros requirements beginning on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, when many of the adjoining property owners attended that hearing. That case ended up being tabled due to circumstances that occurred at that meeting. There was a resignation of two planning commissioners, two canceled planning commission meetings, the appointment of two new planning commissioners, and the return of another current commissioner who was absent from the May meeting. And the planning commission finally resumed meeting on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. We, the people of Key Chai Facebook page, has a live stream of both meetings available for viewing. There's only one voting commissioner in the recommendation before the city council tonight that was the origi, was at the original hearing in May and the reopened hearing in August. And most of the people who spoke in May were not in attendance at the August meeting as there was no understanding the hearing was going to be reopened. The reason for the voting to be approved was that Key Chai needs more commercial buildings, even though it was stated that the liquor store will likely fail in that commissioner's opinion. But if the applicant wants to spend his own money and Key Chai will then have a new commercial building, so be it. Which is not an appropriate zoning reason to put forward, to pass along a recommendation for approval. This decision before you to recommend approval was not about the comprehensive plan, the strategic plan, nor the arts and business district master plan. It seems none of those guiding documents were even considered by the three commissioners who voted to send a recommendation of approval and they did not hear the testimony of those who attended the original May hearing. And last night, I sent a fair hearing protest to the mayor, every member of this council, and I CC'd the city attorney. If the city council decides not to return this case for a rehearing to the planning commission, I ask that you only consider the vote of the one commissioner that was in attendance to both hearings and his vote was to deny the conditional permit be granted. C2 and C3 zoning districts within the city limits of Key Chai allow liquor stores in those locations and such properties are available throughout Key Chai. It was mentioned that there's special events. It's been great seeing Valley Floral have special events. They currently utilize the Oliver property, which is now owned by Jeff Angler's company and is being prepared for development. That's where all their parking goes. So where's the parking going to be for Valley Floral's special events? Once the development happens on that Oliver property, then they no longer have parking for their business. You're well aware of the nature and desired character of the arts and business district. Small shops, arts-focused, places to eat, and a walkable district. Booze and Blooms, liquor and smoke shop, the perfect spot for beer, tequilas, spirits, and more. That's the theme of their other, the first store. That really isn't the type of store we would think would exist within the arts and business district. It's not a gathering place. And remember, please remember, you are not deciding about a coffee and ice cream shop tonight. The only thing that you are considering is a conditional use permit for a liquor store. Key Chai currently has two developers within the arts and business district that are working to grow the business district with the spirit and intent of the arts and business district master plan. I'm thankful for Jeff Angler and Von Rose and their example to our city. If you proceed with this case, please vote to deny this application and uphold the one commissioner who was part of this entire hearing because it was not a fair hearing process. Thank you. All right, sir. Thank you. And you'll state your name.
My name is Arnold Thomas Jr. And my mom was changing my diapers when I moved to Key Chai. First off, nobody has mentioned trash. You guys repay extra money. Everybody in Key Chai.